Hi, we're gonna be starting. If you're in the attendee section right now and you need to a panelist, please do let me know. Alan, I'm not sure if you're on two devices, but if you are, that that may be where the echo is coming from. I mean, can you please raise your hand if you're in the attendee section right now and you need to be elevated to a panelist?
Jessica, are we all set?
Yes.
Okay, ma'am chair, we're ready to go.
Okay, as am I. Good evening, the City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for October twenty six, twenty twenty three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March twenty twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being reported. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be able, you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as there, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called upon, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Good evening, ma'am chair, present.
Good evening, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening. All right, I will turn, turn it over to you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Okay, first we have case BOA one five one three seven six zero.
Do we have any deferrals?
I'm reminded, we need, need to ask if we have any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this evening?
Hi Bob, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you.
Sorry, my case is for forty-six Linwood Street, and we're asking for a deferral at this time?
So that would be for case BOA one five one seven seven nine seven with the address, with the address of forty-six Linwood Street. Could you please explain to the board the circumstance?
We are making some fine tuned adjustments to our presentation, and I have not had enough time to get those changes in for your review in a timely manner.
How much time do you need?
If I could have a four week extension, that would be, I think, adequate.
Javier?
November ninth would be the next subcommittee date.
And I want to confirm, Madam Chair, this is a presentation or they're editing the plans?
Probably both.
Because that's a different process, Madam Chair.
Okay, what, what do we need to do then, Samantha?
We would need enough time to have the plans examiner review the updated plans, have those stamped by that plans examiner, and then sent to the board. Steph, do you mind giving us a timeline on how long someone typically needs when they change their plans?
Well, Madam Chair, I could just say we can defer this to December seventh. So that way, if he changes presentation plans, he can, and then if needed, it could be deferred ultimately to the last hearing day of December twelfth if needed. That might give him a time.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion, dealt by her correctly, motion to defer until December seventh.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Okay, thank you.
Any further request for withdrawals or deferrals? Hearing none, then we'll go, we'll go to case BOA one five one three seven six zero with the address being seven five, seven fifty-three East Broadway. Is the applicant and or they're representing the president to explain to the board?
Can you raise your hand if you're the applicant for this case?
Yeah, we come back to them then?
Yes, ma'am chair, we can do a second call of this.
Yep, keep going.
Okay, next we have case BOA one four nine six four two eight with the address of ten Linden Street. Is the applicant, the end or they're representing the present to explain to the board?
Yes, 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 we are, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Francis Adams. I have a law office in South Boston, Mass., three fifty West Broadway. I represent Dev and Joel McCarthy, who lived in that property since two thousand and two. Also on tonight is the project architect, Annette Beck, and she'll be able to review the plans. Just a quick background, Madam Chair, this, this project, we had a community process. We had two meetings. We met with the Deuchta State Civicus Association, and we also had the mayor's office about a meeting. As of this time, we're not aware of anyone in opposition to the proposal. It's a simple renovation of an existing single family into a two-family home. The applicants plan on moving their, Dev's elderly mother into the first floor apartment. It would be converted into a bi-level first floor apartment. There'll be an addition in the rear, that street level. This area is currently used as a deck. It'll be a small deck on the back of that added on. There'd be a creating a two-bedroom unit on the first floor and ground level with a bedroom on each level, as well as a living room and a bedroom. The second floor, as it stands, there's no additions to it. They're just dormering or squaring off the roof line. And it'll be a two-bed with an addition of an additional bedroom on the attic level. That's why they're dormering the top floor. There's five variances that we are seeking. One is roof structure restriction. The second is Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient lot area. The third is Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient side yard. Fourth is Article sixty-eight, insufficient rear yard. And the last is Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking or insufficient off-street parking. At this point, I would let Annette Beck, the project architect, move over the plans and answer any questions the board may have.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. If you can please move to sheet A two point zero. Yes, thank you. Can you zoom out a bit? Thank you. Okay, so I'll just take you through the project. We are dividing the existing building into two units. So we are the street level and the lower level, the basement level, will become the lower unit. And then the upper floors with additional dormers will create a three level of the second unit, upper unit. So to get to the, the unit on the street level, we have a side existing entry, and then that will be your low, the level, if you scroll down a bit on the sheet. Yeah, not too much. Just go back, please. Okay, so if you look on the left side, lower floor, that is the street level. We have an existing entry, and then on the side of the house, you're gonna get to that unit. And then we're creating a new stairwell, interior stairwell, that leads to the basement level. On that level, we'll have one bedroom and a living space. And then if we scroll up, sorry, on the sheet, the same sheet, then this is the basement level. We have another bedroom, another bathroom, and we have a common exit and entry to the common utility area. Now, sorry, if you scroll down a little bit lower, and then we'll see the, these first floor. So you're coming from the street, you're going up, Steph, please stay there. So if you're coming on the street and then you're going to the first floor, that's the second unit. You're gonna come to a living space, new kitchen, and rear deck. And then please, the next sheet, A two point one. Thank you. Thank you. So on the existing second floor, we're just creating a new stairwell to take you to the attic level. Existing two bedrooms, bedroom, and then no changes there. On the third floor, we are doing new dormers that will give us some head height, and over there, we're just gonna do a master suite. If we go to the last sheet, we'll just explain in general the entire additions. Scroll up, please. I guess it's not the last sheet. Yes, that one. Existing condition, demo, and proposed. So if you look at the front view, there's no changes to the existing house. We are doing the upper dormers on the third floor. And then it's, it's pretty much in alignment of what's happening on the street. A lot of residents have created dormers on the upper floor. Some have mansard styled, and a lot of them are doing like a flanking dormers, shed dormers. On the back, we have the new addition. That's, if you scroll a little bit down, you'll see that on the rear, we have two-story addition that will give you for the first, for the lower unit base, living spaces and bedroom. And those are the changes we're requesting.
Questions from the board?
I don't have, I don't have any questions. I think the PDA provided a recommendation for the project.
They did for all the projects. Are you asking me to read them all, or?
Yeah, you can read them.
Okay, well, their recommendation is approval.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No, yeah, no questions.
Hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the Atkins representation, we hosted a Butters meeting on August twenty-fourth. There were a number of neighbors that were on to express support for the proposal. They were looking forward to the family staying in the neighborhood. We did separately get an email with some concerns raised regarding connection to the private sewer line in the rear, potential water runoff, as well as concerns about the direction that the windows might be facing on the dormer, leading to loss of privacy. The applicant also mentioned, too, they went on to meet with the local civic association as well. We received six letters in support from Butters and four additional letters from the broader South Boston neighborhood. We also received one letter in opposition. I don't have a note, but I believe that's from a butter as well. With that, we'll leave it to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, here, no one else. I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go for with the recommendation, the BPDA, motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one two five three six eight five. The address of eight oh nine to eight eleven Harrison Avenue is the applicant and or they're representing the present to explain to the board?
All right, if you're on, can you raise your hand or send the message in the chat if you're the counsel? All right, yeah, go ahead. We cannot hear you. You may be coming in and out.
All right. Hold on, excuse me.
Can't quite hear you. If you could speak up, that would be helpful.
Okay, yes, yes, now I can hear clearly. Yes, I'm Joan de Vasquez. I'm the owner of the El Barrio Mexican Grill, which is a restaurant located at eight oh nine, eight eleven Harrison Ave. So apparently, last, last year, we did all, like I did all the paperwork for the Board of Appeal and everything. I did the maintenance with that, but apparently from the mayor's office, the guide, some, what I was explaining is that the person who signed, I forgot the name, is Pepe, some, the last name of the guy, I think it was Pepe.
What is it you're requesting, sir? What is it, what relief are you seeking?
Removing, I, I, removing the proviso for a takeout business, so.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there, so the proviso is just to, it requested just to remove the proviso? For takeout, and there won't be takeout?
Sign the letter and send it over, and that's what I've been waiting for.
So you're, I'm sorry, so your request is to do what?
Remove the proviso and then do takeouts.
I think the proviso, as previous provisos have been, they're, they're, they're usually for this applicant only, which means if he's a new applicant, he, he needs to apply for a new one.
Yes, so.
Yeah, and there's no additional work or anything on the space, correct?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, done.
Okay, public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office defer to this board. Unaware of any concerns from the community, and we know that neighbors are excited to have active storefronts on this, this stretch of the neighborhood. So we believe there's mostly support from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five two five eight zero four with the address being fifty-four John Elliott Square. Is the applicant and or they're representing the present to explain?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair members. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm representing the petitioner, One United Bank. Also here is Matt Hyatt, who is the project architect. Matt can provide information on any questions that members may have about the plans. And Terry Williams, who was the president and chief operating officer of One United Bank. Also with us is Greg Donovan, who is the permitting consultant for the project. This is an application to change the legal occupancy of the building at fifty-four John Elliott Square in Roxbury to the headquarters bank of One United. This requires a conditional use permit under Article fifty. The relevant zoning sub-district is an MFR LS sub-district under Article fifty, the Roxbury Neighborhood Zoning Article. Two lots are being combined, producing a total lot size of eight thousand five hundred ten square feet. The site is located at the confluence of Roxbury Street and Center Street in John Elliott Square. There would be a vertical addition to the existing one-story building, which presents more like a two-story building on the Roxbury Street side of the site owing to a grade change. There is an existing garage door and garage parking access from the Roxbury Street side of the site, as can be seen on the south elevation sheet of the plans, which is sheet A two hundred. There's also surface parking accessed by a center street, which is depicted in the rendering on sheet A nine hundred of the plans. As can be seen on the last page of the plans, the site landscaping plan, there would be a relocated curb cut on the center street side of the site with new site landscaping, as well as the introduction of new street trees on the public way. I additionally would point out for the board that the project has already been favorably reviewed by BBDA design staff, and that Scott Slarsky at the BBDA has indicated the BBDA, BBDA design review approval would be immediately forthcoming upon ZBA approval. The building is dimensionally code compliant. None of the work requires zoning relief. But as I said, a conditional use permit is required for the proposed bank use. As to the Article six conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit, I can state for the record that this specific site is in fact an appropriate location for a bank, that the use of the property as a bank will not adversely affect the neighborhood, that there will be no hazards posed to vehicles or pedestrians from the use, nor will it create any nuisance, and that as an established and experienced banking services provider, One United will provide adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use. I'll pause, and we'll take any questions or comments that the board may have.
Thank you. Question, Mr. Rancy, I don't know if you, you have seen comments from the city's disabilities commission? They, they asked about an accessible entrance, that they didn't see one to the proposed basement retail, retail space, and just, you know, talked about access in general, as well as van, accessible parking space.
Sure, I saw that, and I saw that they, they do have an elevator.
Okay.
And that provides access. I think if, I think if you can, you can speak about the accessibility to that tenant space from the front and visibility to, to let people know where is that vertical access.
Certainly. So the, the, the area indicated on the plans, I think it's indicated now is storage. It was originally indicated as a future retail use. That is actually outside the scope because no retail use has been identified. In other words, a retail use could go in there zoning compliance, so long as it is an allowed use under Article fifty, but it's actually not part of these plans. It would require a new application, and that would, of course, require code compliance in terms of accessibility and building code. The bank use is actually the only use. So we had had this conversation with ISD and removed the, again, I'm trying to see the, the version of the plans, but there is no future, future retail use included within the scope. The tenant space, I think, which Ms. Better Brazza is referring to in the front, I think that that's access on grade from the square, which is the lower plan showing now. And I think that the additional space on the second floor is bank space.
Yeah, but in, in what I'm seeing on plan A one oh one, there, there seems to be two risers right at the entrance to that tenant space.
Then I would suggest that no building code relief is being sought, and, and I assume none will be granted. The space would obviously have to be fully compliant with accessibility requirements. So if, you know, we would be willing to accept a proviso of, of, of no, no, no relief granted on that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, the architect, Matt is on.
I am.
Yep, Matt, I don't know if you want to speak additionally to that, but I think where we're going with this is that it will be, all, all entrances and all access points will of course be compliant.
That's correct. Yeah, the, the, the bank is a, a new retail branch that will have an accessible entrance from the guest parking area, the tenant space, the future tenant space at the front of the building has an existing non-accessible entrance at the intersection with John Elliott Square. That is gonna be maintained, but that will not be the primary entrance. We're adding a new accessible entrance to the side of that space from the Center Street sidewalk.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted a Butters meeting, and the applicant went on to meet with the John Elliott Square Neighborhood Association, which offered their support for this proposal. For the Butters meeting, the Butters expressed a variety of opinions, with some being in support of the addition of this new business to the area, and others expressing some concerns around traffic and parking. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that there'll be no building code relief granted for accessibility entries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five zero six four three seven with the address of four O'Donnell Terrace. Is the applicant and or they're representing the present to explain to the board?
Hello, yes.
Yes, please identify yourself.
Sure, sorry, I just stepped out. Our three-month-old is crying right now, so I'm, my husband is tending to him, so sorry about that for not being on camera, but.
No worries.
My name is Daria Barr. I live at four O'Donnell Terrace with my husband Ethan, and we're hoping to extend an existing room over our existing front porch, just about seventy square feet to make a future bedroom for our son. It does follow the pattern of almost all the other houses on our street. It would not be expanding the footprint at all of the house. It is just to add or expand a room on top of an existing porch, as we said. There are some examples of many of the houses on the street that have the same exact expansion, and it would be pretty minor in scale. So it just, it is.
Sorry, we just, we just missed the last.
Porch and existing bedroom that would just be butted out just to get a little bit more square footage.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Sorry, I was just.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, are you still speaking, Daria?
Uh, no, I, I had paused because I didn't know if you.
Okay, yes, I'm asking if there are any questions from the board.
No questions, pretty sure.
All right, hearing none, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office defer to the judgment of this board, some background information, the community process. Oh, and it's hosted in a Butters meeting on August twenty-eighth, where Noah Butters were in opposition to the proposal. The applicant then went on to meet with the local civic association, which offered their support. And then there should be a letter on file with that civic association indicating they're in support. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is a modest addition. I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank, thank you. Are we able to drop from the call now for?
Yes, ma'am, you're, you're good.
Thank you.
Take care of your son.
Thanks.
Next, we have case BOA one four four nine five two eight with the address of two fifty-three. With the address of two fifty-three Huntington Avenue. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Can you raise your hand?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Carmen Cabrera.
Uh, yes, ma'am, please proceed with, uh, your request.
I'm gonna pull Nelson so he can explain better, okay?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Nelson. And, uh, we have a, uh, trying to get a permit to do to, uh, two bedrooms, break the roof and make two bedrooms and a bathroom. And even, uh, denied because they said I don't have enough space in the right side of the yard. And the reason that we don't have right size place in the yard is because of the fence. That we put that fence because we had a daycare and, uh, they, uh, asked for that. So now the fence is always, so, you know me, the fence could be removed.
Madam Chair, I'm getting, I'm a little confused. I think we're, I thought we were hearing a project regarding, um, outdoor seating.
Uh, two fifty-three Huntington Ave is the next case, uh, Ms. Bede Barasa? That's the case we're listening to?
Um, my apologies. I'm so sorry.
You skipped over one. Please proceed.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, uh, will the applicant please proceed?
Yes, uh, uh, like I say, uh, we have that, that fence is the one who caused that we don't have enough space in the right side of the house.
Okay.
But like I was saying, we put that fence without knowing because the thing we bought the house was farther back. So we brought it to the front for safety because we used to have a daycare before. But we no longer have the daycare. So we could work on the fence. See, that's what you guys need.
Excellent. Um, questions from the board?
Um, so if we understand you, you, you put a fence in when you had, because you were required to for the daycare. You no longer have the daycare, so basically you don't need the fence anymore?
No. Not really, no.
Okay, then, then maybe if you wouldn't mind, um, saying that again, then, boy?
Yes.
So what is the issue now?
We have been denied because they say side yard insufficient violation discretion.
Right, which is why you're here seeking a variance.
Right.
Correct. So, so there, so just to clarify, Mr. Stenbridge, they're, they're looking for a second floor addition. So it sounds to me, is your side yard insufficient in existing condition?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you're not, you're not adding to it. It's, it's already an existing condition.
Well, we're not adding to the side. We just want to add to the roof.
Exactly. Any other questions from, from the board?
Yeah, sorry, Madam Chair, this is Javier. Um, through the chair, just wondering if to confirm the occupancy, if it's remaining the same or are they adding the occupancy, uh, or changing it with the addition?
In terms of it being a single family?
Yes.
Okay, uh, can the applicant confirm that, uh, with the addition, this remains a single family?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Uh, so absence of any other questions, we'll take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, we had the applicant notify neighbors, uh, with flyers. Uh, we did not receive any letters in support or in opposition, and we're unaware of any concerns at this time. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I have no other raised hands.
Yeah, I mean, the, um, basically the agenda says two bedrooms and one bath, but the, the drawings that I'm seeing right now in front of me has three bedrooms and one bath. Can you just clarify it's three bedrooms and not two bedrooms as what we have in the agenda?
No, it's two bedrooms and one bathroom.
It's two bedrooms and one bathroom?
Yes.
So it, it's currently two bed, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
But the proposed second floor plan just has three bedrooms drawn.
That might be wrong. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be two bedroom.
Yeah.
And a bathroom, that's it.
Yeah, so I think it's drawn incorrectly. Um, so you, you just want to make sure that you have some really good architectural drawings to build from. It's just a comment. Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so let's have a motion that's clear on, on what they're proposing. Is there a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval, um, with a proviso that you submit a updated second floor plan to reflect your scope.
Do you want to state the scope as two bedrooms or?
As two bedrooms and one bathroom, correct.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barasa?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Go ahead. I can leave now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
All right, bye-bye.
Uh, so, Member Barasa?
Yes.
Sorry, this is, this is Sam, um, with the legal team. So just confirming, it seemed like the applicant mentioned that it was supposed to be three bedrooms.
No, she, they, they corrected. The, the drawings have it draw, the drawings as I'm seeing them have three bedrooms.
Hmm.
And so just for the record, for our record, I just wanted to reflect that. So that's what's in the proviso to submit. Submit drawings accurately indicates the scope.
Perfect, thank you.
As, as two bed.
As two bedrooms, yeah.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four six seven one five two. With the address being seven thirteen to seven fifteen Center Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is David Doyle. Um, thank you, Madam Chair and board members for allowing me to, uh, represent this project. Um, I am co-owner of Casa Verde. For the past three years, we were granted a temporary outdoor dining permit, um, from the city of Boston on the space indicated in the plan. Um, our request is zoning relief. Um, basically, the situation as I understand it, um, the restaurant is located in the parcel that is seven oh seven through seven eleven. Our actual business address is seven eleven Center Street. Um, the adjoining parcel, which has common ownership, um, is seven thirteen, seven fifteen. So our request for relief is to, um, be allowed to use the, uh, the space on the adjoining parcel, which again is under common ownership for, um, a permanent outdoor patio, which would be used, um, as a seasonal patio. So we're trying to change our, um, certi- certificate of occupancy to include outdoor dining.
And you said the, the common area was under common ownership, so just to clear, to confirm that, that, that piece you're, you've already addressed and they're in agreement?
Yes, we have a letter of support, um, from the landlord, who actually proposed the idea of a patio at the start of the pandemic. Um, you know, for the, for the benefit of the restaurant. And it's had strong support from our community, strong support from the, um, the neighborhood hearings, um, that we went through earlier this year.
Thank you. Um, can you confirm, uh, if there's an accessible route to get to the patio?
Yes, there actually is, um, a cutout in the ramp right near our rear entrance. Um, but the, there is also, sorry, if you could, okay, there we go. I can see it now. Sorry. Um, so if you're coming, if, if a guest is coming from inside the restaurant, um, there is there is a cutout in the ramp. Uh, I'm sorry, in the sidewalk, just to the rear of our entrance, um, which leads to a right of way, so that, that is not an actual travel, um, corridor right there. Um, we can also, um, you know, we could, we could also add a ramp from the edge of the sidewalk, but in our experience, most guests are arriving from the back of the restaurant and there is an accessible route right past the Jersey barriers into the patio. And that also allows an accessible route into the rear of the entrance via that, that curb cut, which is shown on the plan.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Questions.
Okay, hearing none, may we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, we, we've had some personnel changes, so I don't have all the information in the community process, but our office is unaware of any concerns right now. We understand that the applicant went to meet with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and received their support. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes.
Go ahead. Can you state your name and address and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Yes, I'm Michael Reiskind. I live at four twenty-five South Huntington Avenue in Jamaica Plain. I'm a member of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and Chair of its Public Service Committee. Uh, we had a neighborhood hearing on this issue on June sixth of this year. Uh, it was flyer, uh, we asked the applicant to flyer a two-block area, a two-block area in all directions. Um, we urge you to, uh, pass this, uh, application for variance. This manager, Casa Verde, David Doyle, is an exemplary manager, um, on the street. Um, and this, uh, uh, rear patio is important for a sustainable restaurant business, uh, at this time. Um, the applicant also came to the Jamaica Plain Center South, uh, Main Streets and received support and went to the Jamaica Plain Business and Professional Association and received support. Uh, personally, I got forty-six different letters of support, um, all, uh, in favor, uh, that were sent to me. So I urge you to pass this, uh, application of variance, um, or, uh, change of occupancy, uh, with the proviso that this, um, change goes to the tenant Casa Verde, uh, only. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, no raised hands at the moment, no additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion, a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant provides an accessible route from the entry to the back, uh, rear, uh, patio space.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barasa?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have a rediscussion. And that would be case B O A one four six two nine two four. With the address of twenty-five Burr Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes, thank you very much. Cameron Merrill with a business address of one hundred State Street, uh, as well as the property owner Kurt Hackenson, uh, is, is on this call as well. So, um, just jump right, jump right into it. Uh, so we come to you, uh, seeking relief for what has been uh, identified as four parking spaces on the apron of Burr Street, which in Boston is uh, referred to as a front yard, even though technically speaking, or I suppose practically speaking, this is the side yard of this property. Uh, that apron for the driveway has been there since this home was reconstructed in two thousand and three with about fifty-five e, uh, feet of width. Uh, the applicant is not looking to create a driveway or do any work at all on his own property. It's actually somewhat of a puzzling, uh, reason why we are even before this board. He originally went to ISD only seeking to extend or to modify the curb cut so that he could pull directly into his garage, uh, where he has an E electric charger, as well as the other owner occupant who has an electric charger in her garage. Um, ISD made the applicant redraw the plans, showing them as if there were four parking spaces in that driveway. Um, historically, since two thousand and three, there may be the occasional use of the driveway as somewhere that parks. However, these two occupants park in their garages. Uh, they do not park on the apron of this driveway. Um, that being said, uh, the modifications to the curb will allow them to better pull into their garages, and there's a photograph showing the existing condition, which might uh, help better clarify that. Um, that being said, uh, even if you do modify the curb, there will be no loss of on-street parking. Uh, we have seven letters of support from all impacted Butters. Uh, we had support of the J P, uh, Neighborhood Council. Uh, and this is just about, uh, an owner occupant wanting to be able to pull into his garage, uh, without having to hop the curb. Um, as a, uh, mitigation to a concern raised by the, uh, Boston Transportation Department, uh, the applicant has indicated that he is, uh, willing to only modify the left curb as you see it here and reduce the, uh, parking spaces a- as directed to be drawn to only the areas in front of the garages. And I think that the concern was raised by B P D because if someone's backing out of one of those parking spaces, uh, they were concerned about, uh, the fact that it's about two and a half or three feet shorter than Boston requires. Uh, that being said, they're allowed to pull into their garages and back out of their driveways, so there's no change in condition, um, with that circumstance. Um, so, so effectively, uh, while this was, uh, they were requested to have drawn in four parking spaces there, what they're really asking for is just the use of the alley in front of their garages and a change of the curbs that he doesn't have to hop that curb to pull straight into his garage. And, uh, Kurt is on and he can tell you he's a life, or not lifelong, but two thousand and three, uh, J P resident. Um, there's a lot of, uh, you know, support for him o- on this street. Uh, and, and it's unfortunate that he has to seek relief for it, but the way that, uh, he was directed before my involvement was to draw those spots on here.
So can you clarify what the, what, what is the current width of your curb cut? And are you looking to expand it or sh- or shift it?
So the, the current width, and I have this, the current width is about twenty-five and they want to go to about, uh, I think it's a little over thirty, oh yeah, there it is.
It's twenty feet you're existing, twenty feet you're existing, and you want to enlarge it by almost eighteen feet.
So I think that that might be one, uh.
So that's thirty-eight, almost thirty-eight feet of, of curb removal, of not having a curb.
Right, so I, I think it might be a little less because the plans, there was a subsequent plan set filed that, uh, showed the measurement uh, to the inside of the rounded curb. Uh, but e- either way, yes, that, that's effectively what's happening and no on-street parking will be removed. And like I said, he is willing to forego the right side of the curb, so it's only the left side of the curb that is directly in front of his garage, which is on the light left side of that uh, driveway. But like I said, he's doing no work to, um, his own property. And our engineer confirmed that that kind of funny little curb extension isn't required for any ADA compliance, um, or really engineering that he could understand. He doesn't know why it's there and it is blocking the, uh, the, the driveway and where this garage has been since two thousand and three.
It, it looks like there's on-street parking currently. Is that correct?
There is, um, and with the reduction of the right side, which we're willing to forego, there will be no lost on-street parking spaces. Only two cars can fit there. Um, only two cars will be fitting there and the butter across the street confirmed that.
Um, I'm, I'm a little confused. What's the reduction? Because you've just said that it's going from, you're proposing twenty to thirty, whatever, is it thirty-eight or something else? So where's the reduction that you're talking about?
So the property to the right of the driveway or that, that curb will be reduced. That's what I was referring to, because that's the only area where there is a even remote possible, uh, impact on on-street parking. So the area where that, people will be able to park on that curb will be shortened. However, you still have two full-length spots on the street there. Uh, they're not being taken away at all. Um, but like I said, he will completely forego the right side of this plan. Just as long as he doesn't.
So I just want clarification, there's r- there's two garage spaces.
Yes.
One at each kind of at the ends of the house and then there's space in between. So theoretically, you can really fit three parking spaces in front of the house.
Uh, without blocking garage, are you saying?
Correct, uh with uh with blocking the garage, because right now on Google Earth, I'm seeing that there's a part, you ho- the whole space is asphalted. And on Google Earth, you have a parked vehicle on the asphalt all the way to the right, which is the one that you wanna forego. So I'm assuming that you you that you do park your vehicles outside of the enclosed garage. So if we were to go with the theory that you're gonna forego to the right, theoretically, you can really fit three parked spaces in front of the gar- in front of the house.
Right, and it it, you know, it's to the to the side of the house, technically to the front of the house. Uh, the front door is off of spring park.
Yeah, to the side of the house, correct.
But they all, they'll reduce that to just two, to in front of the garages so that they can pull in. Um, they, if you look historically, they almost never park cars in this driveway. Um, occasionally, there will be one car parked on that apron. Um, and they intend, they originally submitted this plan without any parking on the on the driveway. Um, but they were asked to modify the plan and we called
Your electric chart, the charger is gonna be inside the garage or outside of it?
They're already inside the garage and
Inside the garage, okay.
Um, it's just that by virtue of having the electric car to get in and out of there in a way to utilize the charger, he has to do this maneuver over the curb cut, um, because he can't pull all the way. I think there, I submitted a picture which might show this a little bit more clearly. Um, but he
You would be restoring, you you would be restoring, you would be adding curb to the right.
No, that curb is still there. It's there right now. So that on this planet on the screen, the dashed lines are what's there. That would be
Dash line, right, so the dash line, right, so you would just have to resubmit a new plot plan.
Showing the right side there.
Yeah, existing, correct, okay. I I think I have clarity, um, but the- theoretically, it would be it would be advantageous to just green up the space.
Yep, definitely.
Yeah, I would, I would say, can you clarify to us, because I I'm still not understanding where the reduction in the width is?
Yeah, so I think, Sherri, I think um it's easier to see on Google Earth, um, if you have that if you have that capacity, but um basically what he's proposing is um to the right where there are these dash lines, he um, the applicant is willing to keep that existing curb. So not remove it as is shown here. And then that way you can have access direct access to the garage space to the left. Then to the, then, then to the left, um it's true that the curb as it is is not allowing for a car to enter to the left side of the garage. So it makes sense to remove that curb because it's already being kind of used as a parking space. Um, so I can understand that there's not that much of a uh, you, he's not, they're not really taking away any uh parked spaces. Um, because it's already being used almost as an access to a- access drive.
But they're expanding the cur- the the curb cut?
They are expanding the curb.
In contrast to shifting the curb cut?
Yeah, there are, they are expanding it by ten foot six. Yeah.
And so is there a reason that you wouldn't just shift the cur- shift it so that it stays the same width? Since you, since I'm hearing that they're not using the right side or willing to give up the right side?
So, and if we shift it over, then we'll be blocking the other garage.
The other garage, okay.
So there's two garages, one on the far left and one on the far right. And over
Of the same, of the same property?
Yes, it's two owner occupied uh condominiums, each of them with their own EV stations.
Yeah, so it's so confusing because on the Google Earth, it almost seems like the curb is already shifted beyond. It's, it doesn't show it like the plot plan.
Yeah, and on the regular Google map, I mean, it's showing a a park, parked car that looks like it's blocking
You're right, correct, almost see, it almost seems like the curb has already been removed in this Google Earth.
Uh, no, that I think that car was just wedged over there on that occasion. There is a curb there. There's effectively a full uh, you know, like three or four feet of curbing which overlaps
So that's not a legitimate parking spot where that par- parked car
Do you have a picture of it?
Yeah.
Oh, here, right here, right here. Can we zoom in?
Okay.
Zoom in closer. Yeah.
Uh, there's also a street view, I think, one slide down.
Right there is, right there is, is good. So we're, we're, we're basically saying um to remove the curb um to the left. And then the, where the car is parked currently, we're saying put that back to green space. And then there should be a curb already in front of that parking, parking, parked car. Yeah, I mean, this is more like fixing it for the owner. You know, uh, the violation, if there was to be a side yard violation is already existing. That, you know, that's, that would be my theory.
Exactly. So like I said, uh, if if either submission of new plans showing only the left curb being removed um with less parking spaces on the apron, uh, we're, we're happy to to do that or a proviso. Um, it's, it's, you know, really just for him to not have to drive over the curb to get into the garage.
Mr. Stenbridge, any questions?
We do have some comments from BTD.
Oh, good.
Oh, that would be helpful, because I didn't see them.
That's great.
What Mr. D'Amico says is for twenty-five Burr Street, all four parking spaces are only fourteen feet nine inches, which is far below the BTD minimum of eighteen feet. In addition to that, he said, also due to the inadequate length of the spaces, this could result in a sidewalk overhang, making it dangerous for bikes and pedestrians. Which I think this slide shows um the
The concern.
For moving out onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, so I think what's been presented to us is really that there's no park, there's not gonna be any parked vehicles. So for, for this to work, it would only have to be an aisle driveway to get into the enclosed garage, but there could be no parking spaces because I agree with Bob D'Amico's comments. That is not long enough.
So the only, uh, he, when you do park in front of the garage, um, there is uh no overhang, that stone wall sticks out a little bit further, but with the car, whether the cars are backing out of a parking spot or the garage itself, they are still backing over the curb, which is why the suggestion of reducing it to maybe two parking spaces in total will maximize uh, you know, the visibility, et cetera, and basically maintain an existing condition of cars backing out of their garages onto Burr Street.
Yeah, we can only go with the plot plan, you know, and and it's not meeting the parking dimension that's put out by BTD, so um
We can revise.
I see, I see really it being, the modifications really being an aisle to drive into your enclosed garage, but it cannot be for park spaces. Uh, we have a recommendation from B, BPDA and we can read that for the record.
So if we could uh ask for a a a deferral and we can try to modify and meet with uh Mr. D'Amico um to address that?
That could probably be a good, I, I'm thinking that would be a good idea.
But I think for the record, um, Chair Don, can you read BPDA's recommendation?
Uh, for the record, it's a denial without prejudice. I mean, uh, I guess my question is, because I I, listening to Ms. Bebrazza, I I hear the potential of a motion uh that, that may work, but if you want a deferral instead, that's fine too.
Uh, if if there's some, if there's a prov- if there's a proviso that would work, that's not a denial, we obviously uh prefer that. Um, but we're just concerned that a denial would put us uh in a situation where we'd have to start the process over.
Would you, would the applicant be okay that you can no longer park your car in front of the driveway?
Uh, well, that's what it is right now. Um, so that is effectively a denial.
Well, that's not what the, the request includes though. The, the request includes four parking spaces. So if we approved it as is, it would allow you to park four parking p- spaces, which we're saying we do not support.
Right, I I think that what our request would be uh to reduce that to two with only the left curb cut. Um, but if that's not acceptable, either we'd like an opportunity to try and reconfigure it perhaps diagonally or a way that we can gain
So I'd like to put forward a motion of deferral to allow the applicant to speak directly to B, BP, BTD. Uh, but I think you've now heard all of our arguments and my concerns.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Sir, uh, Madam Chair, we can suggest a deferral date to December seventh, just to give a little bit more time on this?
Yep, that sounds good. Okay, uh, so
And you can go to the full board or this board, uh, you know, if if you, if you want additional opinion, this can go straight to the full board as well.
That, that is up to you uh to the board, if you want to keep it at the subcommittee, uh, or if you think it requires full board?
Yeah, I mean, I think the subcommittee is fine, it's more the timing
I value all of your opinion equally, subcommittee, full committee hits.
Yeah, I mean, the, does the date work for you, Mr. Merrill, is maybe the main question?
Um
Number seven is the date he's looking at, which is a subcommittee.
Yes, let me just confirm, I apologize. Um, yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion to defer, I have a second, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Raza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, see you then.
You do.
Okay, are we giving uh seven five three East Broadway another chance or?
So Madam Chair, there, they appear to be on, they're under as any bakery and cafe?
Oh, perfect.
I'm not sure why they didn't raise their hand, but they're, they're present.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I, this is my, our first time doing this, so I didn't know I had to raise my hand, I'm so sorry.
That, well, we're happy you're here, so uh, you know, let's just read the, the case into the record first and we'll hear from you.
Okay.
So this would be case BOA one five one three seven six zero with the address of seven fifty-three East Broadway. So at this point, please go ahead and explain to the board.
A person from any, any bakery?
My name is Annie and I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Sorry.
We can hear you.
We took over a bagel place, we used to have a bakery. Okay, we had a bakery a block away and we're took over a bakery, a bagel place that's a block away from our old shop and all we're trying to do is remove the proviso for takeout from the old owner's name and add it to uh my names.
Yeah. Great. Any, any questions from the board? That's as straightforward as we get.
I don't think so.
No, I mean, any questions from the board, not, not you? Okay, uh, can we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, we understand that the applicant has reached out to the local civic association, weren't aware of any concerns, and we know many in the community are excited for them to open in this new location. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Thank you, ma'am, I have no raised hands, thanks.
Great, uh, may, may I have a motion?
Man, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Raza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you so much, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, have a, have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you, folks.